Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this is a combined live meeting and also online meeting. In-person attendance is limited to 18 people. Masks are required. Attendees will need to practice racial, uh, social distancing. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. Burlington School Committee will hear public comment in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Cable, uh, Burlington Cable Access TV. For those joining via WebEx, the meeting number, access code is two, three, four, five, one, six, nine, eight, six, six, nine, and the meeting password is Burlington. Okay, this is a special meeting of the school committee called solely for the purpose of addressing the mandated mask policy that was adopted back towards the beginning of the pandemic a year or so ago. That's the only item on the agenda this evening. So with that, Dr. Conti, I'll turn this over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some background, as the, this governor's office and the Department of Education really made the local policy moot after it had already been passed by passing a, a state mask requirement for all public schools. So we've been under really the state requirement since the fall, since the start of the year. That was extended for initially, I think, put in place till January, then extended till February 28th. We had been discussing in a while in, in open sessions that at some point, the governor was going to pass that decision back to the localities. So I think it was last Tuesday or Wednesday, the governor, I think on Wednesday morning, announced that they were not going to be continuing with the state mask requirement for schools. And so it was going to be ending on February 28th is, is sort of the date. So that was where we left it. With the state now lifting their mask requirement, then the local policy would still be in place. And then, um, so we had town meeting and wanted school committee to consider that policy now with a new context that we didn't have in the fall. So just to review for the committee, I know you're aware of these numbers, and they're also available on the, on the website. Sometimes the numbers that I'm going to share, I'm doing Sunday to Sunday numbers. The Department of Ed does Thursday to Thursday. So if people are saying the numbers are different, I appreciate that. The totals will be the same. So if we look at January 8th to 15th, that week, we had 150 cases, students and staff in the district. The following week, the 15th to the 22nd, or 21st, because there was a holiday, we had 118. The following week, we had 66. Then the 28th through the 4th, we had 42. And then February 4th to 11th, so last week, we had 18 cases, 15 students. So just like to state, our cases have really dropped significantly. Our vaccination rates, I think I quoted you last meeting, were over 80% at the high school, right around 80% at the middle, and our five to 11-year-old were under 50, but I think last week, they came up over 50%. And one thing I just need everyone to consider is even using the old rules by the CDC when we were identifying closed contacts, that if there was a student who had contracted COVID and recovered from COVID, and again, were asymptomatic and back in school, they wouldn't be considered a close contact for 90 days. So that would take us to the end of the year. So essentially, from my way of thinking, and you all could differ, is that we were treating students who had been infected and were asymptomatic afterwards, the same as we were treating a vaccinated student from a CDC perspective in terms of quarantine. So, given all those factors, because we really don't know, in the five to 11-year-olds, our vaccination rate may be 55%, we really don't know how many students have actually contracted COVID and recovered from COVID. We just don't have that number. So the number of students who wouldn't be considered close contacts may be much higher than the, than the 55%. And we would still like to encourage families to speak to their pediatricians about being vaccinated. I think that's, uh, still, that doesn't go away. My recommendation to the committee, and I don't think, again, it should be a surprise to any of you, is that you rescind the policy that you set when the context was different back in, I think it was August or September. I don't have the exact date. But that would be the policy EB.
August 17th.
17th. So August 17th, EBCFA, that if you could rescind that policy, that would allow us to go max mask optional for students in all of our buildings on, starting on Monday, February 28th, when students return and staff return from winter break. And again, with that being said, I just want to emphasize that is masks are optional. We would expect many of our students to still wear masks, many of our staff to still wear masks. And we would honor those who wanted to make the decision to wear a mask, as well as those who don't want to make, don't want to wear a mask. And, um, and we would, again, make sure that there was no pressure for one decision or the, or the other in school. So with that, Mr. Chair, that's kind of my, my recommendation, is that the school committee rescind the existing policy.
Chair will entertain a motion to get matter on the table?
Um, I move that we rescind the policy on face coverings, file EBCFA, that was adopted July 17th, is that the date?
August 17th.
August 17th.
August 17th of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And discussion on the motion. Martha?
Um, I, uh, I agree that, that it's time for us to move forward with changing our mitigation strategies, that our numbers are very far down. I, I am concerned about, I feel like the state is really tone deaf, as they were over the, the December break, that by choosing February 28th, it's the day right after vacation, and we have in the past seen some spikes after vacation. I would be more comfortable perhaps lifting the mandate for, on February 28th for the high school, and now if the middle school is, uh, is at 80% vaccinations, doing that, but perhaps waiting another week to be sure that, um, that there, uh, you know, that there isn't a new spike that we want to try to mitigate. So that is a concern of mine, that I could make a motion for an amendment, I suppose, but I would like to hear what other people think about it.
Okay. Anybody else? Carol?
Yeah, I agree with Martha that, um, just based on the numbers that we've seen following a vacation this year so far, it, um, it might make sense to wait a week or two, especially at the elementary schools. I can, I see her point about waiting, uh, to do it on the 28th at the high school and the middle school, because they are at 80%, and we would have received a waiver from the state had they not lifted it. And so, yeah, I'm also curious what other people, if there's any appetite for delaying it a little bit at the elementary school.
Any further comment?
Um, we have, we get to speak up?
You got your chance, okay? Just be patient.
Yes. Uh, I understand the point that Martha and Carol are making, and I'm sure there are people who feel that way. I don't. I just, I think we should rescind it. I think an awful lot of people have had COVID, and we don't know it, and they have a certain amount of immunity. And personally, I'm kind of done with masks. However, I would like to say that there are people, there are, there are students, there are parents, who are going to ask their children to continue to wear masks. And, you know, there's a lot of things about people's lives that we don't know. A child may wear a mask because he's terrified of making his mother sick, or his father sick, or his little sister sick, or... So I would really ask parents to, to explain that some people will wear masks, and that's because they feel the need to, and they have every right to do that. And some people will not wear masks, for whatever their reasons are, the mandate, assuming it's lifted. But I would expect, like, zero tolerance on mask bullying from, from schools and, and families. Like, we all have to let everybody do what they feel is best. So that's my position.
And, and I was going to say, I, um, I also understand where you two are coming from and agreeing in that, but I also feel like, at this point, parents are going to do, you know, what they're comfortable doing. And in, if they feel that they were, I'm hoping they would make the right decision, that if they felt that they had gone out of state, that they were, you know, took the risk and, uh, and knew they were exposed in some, in some way, or, you know, or guessing that maybe they were because of something they attended, that they would do the right thing and ask their children to wear a mask if that's what they're comfortable doing. But I, I agree with Chris that I think we should rescind it tonight for all the schools, instead of it being one school and not another. I also want to make sure that we make it very clear that, um, you know, anybody who wants to wear a mask, that there, like Chris had said, there's, there is no bullying going on for the students who choose to. And that, um, you know, that, that, I think everyone's going to do the right thing for their families, and they'll do the right thing for the community when they come back. And I want to just say that I want to trust people, instead of mandating things, because I think we're all getting, got tired of mandates, and it's time, you know, to just move on.
And for the record, I'm in favor of rescinding it this evening for elementary, middle school, and the high school. All the reasons have been given, and I pretty much concur with what's been said. Uh, I know there are people here, Dr. Conti.
Just a quick clarification is, I've spoken with Deb Clark regarding the preschool as well. She's talked to her parents, her staff, and they want to follow what the district does as well. So you had mentioned elementary, middle, high. I just want to make sure that we would include the preschool in that, in that as well.
And the other thing I just want to emphasize and mention, because I don't think it has been yet, um, school buses don't come under our jurisdiction. That's a federal jurisdiction, and my understanding is that still masks are mandated on, on school buses. And unless that's lifted by the CDC, which I don't know if it has been or not.
Also, yeah, I also wanted to comment too, that aside from school buses, that they still need to wear masks on school buses, that if they go to the nurse's office, they also need to wear a mask as well, correct?
Yes, because the federal, they, that's defined as a healthcare space, and that has not been lifted yet. So again, when we hear about school buses and nurse's offices, we can make that change. We'll be providing masks in the nurse's office, so if there's a child who doesn't have a mask who needs to go, they can walk into the nurse's office, put a mask on, and that would never be a reason for them not to go into the nurse's office.
An after-school program also?
Um, again, we're, that follows a different agency, but we're going to be following the, it doesn't make sense for us to make it optional during the day and not optional in the afternoon. So we'll be following the district policy as the complete district preschool through high school and into the after-school program.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I know there are people here who may or may not want to comment. I think you've heard from all five members, so you know how this vote is going to go. So to the degree that you want to try to convince us to go one way or the other, give it a shot, I guess, but, um, I think you've heard from all of us. And the reason we only have one item on the agenda this evening, without any noted public participation, is we have town meeting at 7:30 that we all have to get down the hall for at some point, so.
Mr. Chair, do you mind before?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just a couple other points. I, I appreciate everyone saying that we need to be supportive of everyone's choices and, and respect what those choices are. And so thank you all for saying that. Dr. Conti, is it possible to ask the principals to set aside a little bit of time in each class today to reinforce that with every student, just to make sure that the message gets out? And that, I don't know, even, even on Monday morning, before, when everyone comes back, when the choices are made, on the 28th, I mean?
Absolutely, I think it's a great idea, so I'll pass that on.
Thank you. The second thing I wanted to ask is, I mean, I was going, I've been going back and forth, and even though we weren't able to make an agreement on the date, I will, still will support the choice, uh, vote tonight to, just to be clear, you said, a couple times we said tonight, but the, the date is the 28th of February, correct? Okay.
Yep.
Some of the research I've been reading is that if you choose, if you are vaccinated and you choose to wear a high-quality mask, the distinction is, in all, all the articles that I read, it's a high-quality mask. Is that something that the school district can provide? Or it's been brought to my attention that some of those KN95s are available at different pharmacies, and to either the district can provide, I'm not sure if the child sizes are available at those pharmacies. But perhaps the district can, and provide a few of those, so it just offers those, that extra layer for those families that choose to continue to mask. Just a suggestion that was given to me.
Again, Mr. Chair, we can certainly look for child sizes in the KN95s. We're receiving masks from the state now, along with tests, so we'll see if we can supplement those masks with different sizes.
That's great.
And so, haven't heard that we can't. And then, I'm sorry, one correction is, I, I got a correction. We, we did not poll the preschool parents, we just, we did say, uh, we're going with the district, just because it would be easier to manage, and so that's what we're doing.
Catherine?
I, I wanted to add to what you were saying with the higher-quality masks for adults. And again, everything that I've been reading too, is that the old, my mask protects you and your mask protects me, is kind of not the point anymore, as long as you can wear one of the higher-quality masks. When you're wearing it, you're really protecting yourself. So again, that goes back to why, part of why I support this, because again, the adults, and if we can get the right sizes for the students, or if they're double masking, if they're super concerned, then I think, you know, we can, everyone can be safe and feel safe.
Martha?
Um, yeah, I, I, I do agree, and the reason I'm, you know, willing to go, to vote to lift this tonight, although I would have preferred it, have a little more time after a vacation, is because of things like, we're in a different place than we were. You know, we've learned a lot, things have changed, different variants have different situations. So I, I do think that that's an important piece of my decision-making. I do, you know, want to acknowledge that there's people with very strong emotions, because this is very stressful, and it has been stressful for most families, I think, you know? And it's been stressful in both directions. It's been stressful for kids who have been, had to wear masks and felt they were anxious about it. It's also stressful for families who may have somebody in their home who's immunocompromised, and their children are afraid, or, you know, their children, I got an email from someone whose kids were, you know, didn't want to get vaccinated, but they got shots because their younger sibling and their grandparent couldn't, you know, weren't safe enough. So I do want to thank all the children of the Burlington schools, who have been carefully wearing their masks and have gotten their vaccinations, and knowing that it will not only protect themselves, but it'll also protect their friends, who may not be able, you know, have medical issues, or their family may be at, at higher risk. And I, I, I also would like to just mention that it's my understanding, in addition to the two items that were mentioned before, that if, after we lift, if we vote to lift this, which looks like we will, that the federal regulations about buses will still require, and the school nurses' offices will still require masks. And they, the state is also saying that students and staff returning from a five-day quarantine following a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use, other than when eating, drinking, or outside, and conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day 10 of exposure. They also recommend that a face covering be worn by individuals who are not vaccinated or who are otherwise immunocompromised. And also, people who are vaccinated are not required to wear a mask, but are encouraged, may do so if they so desire. And I just want to, wanted to make sure people realize that a lot of us feel like we've had it, we don't want to do this anymore, but the pandemic isn't over. And there are many people who are still quite at risk. Our country's had over 900,000 people die of this in the last two years, and it's a very serious, dangerous, contagious illness. So that is why I feel we have been very careful, and I feel like it may be time to, to start lifting some of these mitigation factors. There may be other things. I know Dr. Conti is looking at other ways we can open up a little bit more, because there are other issues that are, of course, involved with this besides the masks. But I do want it to be clear that it's not, you know, we're lifting the mask mandate, and it doesn't impact every single other mitigation factor if we, if we vote to do that. And I'm glad you mentioned it doesn't start till February 28th, if we vote tonight.
Right, and, and I know, like, I, I just want to bring it up too, because someone had asked the question, and we can maybe talk about this at the next meeting, is, but allowing parents to start volunteering again, and that's, I think, some of the things that Martha is talking about, is that we want to try and bring things back to normal as best we can, I think in stages that makes sense. So we're all, we're looking at all of that, and again, I think it's important to be able to get the parents back in to, to help out.
Okay, um, is there any comment from the audience? Yes, sir. If you're going to speak, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone so people can hear you at home. And identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, Jeremy Brooks, to Ms. Monaco's point. I'd like to also ask that any bullying policy be retroactive for folks not wearing masks as well, not just those that choose to wear masks, please. Thank you.
All right.
He, he wants it to be both ways, a two-way street. He doesn't want people to bully kids who are not wearing masks either, and I think we brought that up.
Um, that's exactly what I meant. Don't bully kids who wear them, and don't bully kids who don't wear them. No bullying, zero tolerance for bullying relative to masks.
How about unrelated to masks? We also...
Yeah. Good point.
Yeah, okay.
Good point.
Just a little frosting on the cake.
Is there anybody, anybody else in the audience? Bob, anybody? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I live in Burlington. I moved here three years ago. I actually left Arlington for a lot of issues within the school. Unfortunately, I thought I did great research till I came to Burlington, and a little bit disappointed. I think this pandemic has been rough on everyone, but I think that we need to move into a sense of normalcy for these kids. I think that mental health has not clearly been addressed. I work in it every day. I work with physicians. I work in a job where I've onboarded over 1,000 physicians for this pandemic. I'm aware of the statistics. I'm aware of the issues. My daughter tested positive for COVID in Burlington. Lot of discrepancy with the information that was given. I've been very responsible in regards to COVID. We traveled at the height of COVID last year, when everyone was saying not to travel. We actually went to the national parks for 10 days. I did get my kids tested appropriately. I did have them wear masks. People do the responsible things. People follow the responsible guidelines, and yes, we do have the some that don't, for many reasons, not just of ignorance. Regardless, we need to stop using anti-vacciner vaccine. We need to find equal ground. We need to move forward. These kids deserve normalcy. They deserve to have fun days in schools. They deserve to see their parents. Mask, no mask, it's, we need to move forward. And we need to just move in a right direction, because it's been a rough two years, and I pretty much think everybody across the boards is done with this. It's, it's, it's very sad, but we can learn from it and move forward.
Thank you.
Hi, Carmela Schmazli. Thank you. It's, uh, it's good to see that you guys see the problem that we are having with our It's, one of the problems that I, actually, tonight that I have, is the fact that you're saying vaccinated children in high school and middle school, it's okay for them to go back, you know, without a mask after the 28th. Obviously, the statistics and all the data that's out there, vaccinated or non-vaccinated, everybody's getting this. So why even bother talking about something that just doesn't make sense? Poor children that are in elementary school. My, my poor son, he's scared to put his mask down, then I tell him to take a mask break. That's just not okay. Stop putting, segregating these kids. Thank you.
For the record, the motion that's before the body is to stop the mandate at all levels, including elementary. I just want to make sure people are clear on that. Anything further?
Here is one person on WebEx.
Okay.
Looks like Lauren Nikorsky. Sorry if I said that wrong.
Are you there, ma'am?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I, um, I'm a parent of a preschooler at the BECC, and I think that what everyone is making, what everyone is saying is making a lot of sense about the older kids. For the preschoolers, the kids under five, I think that we should leave the policy as is. I think changing it makes sense for the older kids, but the kids who haven't been able to get a chance to get vaccinated yet, um, we should make no change in the mask policy, because the kids at the BECC are all unvaccinated and have no choice to get vaccinated. So the only protection they have is masks right now, and I think that we could revisit it when they've had the chance to get vaccinated. But for them, um, what, once we have them stop wearing masks, all the work that we've done for the past two years is just going to be kind of pointless, because they'll all, um, you know, the, in a snap of a finger, they're all gonna, all could get it. So, not popular opinion, but that's, I want my son to be protected. He has airway problems, and he has breathing problems. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, just for people who are listening, um, policy, well, the motion on the table is to remove the mask mandate. However, anybody who was, um, wants to continue to wearing a mask is, is welcome to do so, encouraged to do so. So, um, that option goes from high school to middle school to elementary school to The child or the parent, it's the child to continue to be masked, they have every right to do that.
The same point has been brought to my attention several times by preschool parents. And I think probably the best way to fill that is for people to encourage those little ones who cannot yet get the vaccines, to still wear the mask in the midst of someone's comfortable. I don't think we can force anybody anymore. But I do think there's a lot of preschool parents that, that will continue to put the mask on the, on the children under five, because they feel more comfortable that way. And I hope that is the case.
Could I say one more thing?
Absolutely. Sure.
Um, I understand that they can wear a mask if they want to, but there aren't effective N95s available for this age group, for kids that small. So how can they be protected if they don't have effective masks?
If we, if we can find the smaller mask for, for kids that age, we'll certainly try to find it. It's a, I don't, I don't deny that it's a dilemma, but, um, we'll do the best we can.
Can find them though, and, and have them available, as soon as that would help.
Yeah, there is another WebEx person with the hand up, Anne Ryder. Again, I hope I said that correct.
Ms. Ryder, you there?
Yes, thank you. I raised my hand before I heard Mr. Murphy speak, but I really wanted to comment. I also have a preschooler, I have two elementary school kids, so next year I will have three kids in the same school, and I will love it. But I wanted to actually point out the alternative point, that, and maybe it's been made before, my younger-aged children are testing lower than my oldest student. They're not identifying sight words, they're not identifying letters, they're not communicating clearly, and I believe it's because of masks, and I believe it's because of a lack of socialization. My four-year-old has been without a mask for her entire life, but for the last two weeks at school, and I want it to stay that way. I won't send her to a kindergarten program that requires a mask. I won't allow a preschool program to hold back her learning anymore, and I think that's true of my older elementary school children as well.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Sherald, and I had a whole statement prepared, and I'm very happy with the decision to rescind the mask. But hearing that last comment, I am a public school teacher, I'm an early literacy, reading and writing test, all I work with are children who struggle to learn to read, and I completely agree with the comment that I just heard. People, I've heard people say that this is not children's learning, and there's a very vulnerable children who we do not, if they don't see your mouths, they do not learn the sounds. A student told me yesterday that he can't sometimes hear because he can't see the mouth, he's six. So it is a very real, real thing that this will affect some children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, if there are some other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have my hand up, I don't know if anybody can see it.
There are two WebEx members with their hands up.
Okay, please identify yourselves, sir. While they just spoke.
Sean Cashman, yes, I'm you. Mr. Cashman, I'm you.
Sean Cashman.
Hi, sir.
Good evening. When I last spoke at the school committee meeting, I asked you to vote in favor of our children not to impose a mask mandate on them. I cited many reasons, but the most important was that my five-year-old entering kindergarten would have a hard time learning to read, to read due to not being able to see his teacher's mouth move, and seeing how the words are supposed to be pronounced, as well as my 11-year-old with anxiety and sensory issues that affect his behavior. Well, I'm sad to report that my kindergartner is delayed in reading, and my fifth grader is having one of the worst school years emotionally and behaviorally. And this is despite them both having absolutely fantastic teachers. While this is sad, it's not surprising. The mask mandate has done nothing but harm children. My five-year-old wears his mask religiously all day at school, and still got COVID from another student. He never had one symptom. Back in January, I went to the high school admin office to file some paperwork. When I walked in wearing my mask, there were three or four staff members in the office wearing the mask below their nose and mouths. When they saw me, all but one of them pulled them up, and the one that didn't pull his up left the office and proceeded down the corridor unmasked. The nice gentleman behind the counter that helped me kept his mask below his nose as he helped me. I'm totally okay with this, and I don't think anyone should, who doesn't want to wear a mask, should have to feel like they have to wear one. What this shows, though, is that the school administration is not taking it seriously, but is asking our children to. It's quite clear what needs to happen here tonight. Vote for our children well-being, and follow the state guidelines, and rescind the mandate. Thank you.
There's another person?
Yeah, one more.
Is it gonna be the last one, folks? Because we have to, we have to get down to town.
Kim S.
I didn't catch the name.
Kim S.
Kim S.
You there? You just need to unmute.
Sorry about that, not used to WebEx. Kim Solomon, I'm a mother of a third grader, and I also have a two-year-old who has been attending two different daycares since September. So I wanted to comment on the person who is concerned at the preschool level. I wanted you to know that both of the daycares that we've been going to are running without masks, and have not had a significant number of cases throughout. This has just not been an issue for that age group, and I want to make sure that it, you know, encompasses all of the schools regardless of the vaccine percentage, because as the woman in person said earlier, it doesn't make a difference at this point, vaccinated or unvaccinated, people are getting this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm now gonna put the motion to a vote. The motion on the table is to rescind the mask mandate policy that was this committee on August 17th, 2021. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 5-0. This is item number 10, anything for that, Dr. Conti? The chairman? Chair will entertain a motion, adjourned?
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming tonight, folks.